Okay, good evening, everybody. It's 6:01 PM on May 1st, 2025. Happy May Day, happy Law Day. I'm Mike Capuano, I'm the Chairman of the Planning Board. With me tonight is our Vice Chair Amelia Avoff, our Clerk Jahan Habib, and our members Michael McNeely, Lynn Richards, and Luke Schuster. By that, we have a forum pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025. This meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. The video recording of proceedings will be available on the city's website, specifically at the Meetings and Events page, or by emailing planningboard@sumervillema.gov. For any members of the public who are here and who are going to provide testimony or comment to the extent that that will be part of tonight's meeting, please state your name, street of residence, and city of residence for the record beginning of the testimony. An announcement that the Planning Board has an open seat for an alternate member and a seeking applicants. If you would like to apply and have a background that is either relevant to what we do or otherwise deeply involved in seeing the future of our city as we plan forward, please email planningboard@sumervillema.gov. So, we have a number of items on our agenda, some of which have been previously opened and heard and testimony has been taken, and some have not. So what I'd like to do, I think, I think 74 Middlesex Avenue and 362 Mystic Avenue need to be read into the record. Have they been opened yet, Steve? Do you recall?
They have not yet been opened. They were advertised for today.
Okay, thanks. Could I have the clerk please read into the record the notice of public hearing for those two items?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. 362-368 Mystic Avenue. Hayes of Somerville LLC proposes to establish a cannabis retail sales use in the Mid Rice 5 MR5 zoning district, which requires a special permit. ZP 24-00093. 74 Middlesex Avenue. Leonis Donut Shop Incorporated seeks to establish a formula business principal use in the Assembly Square mixed-use ASMD district, which requires a special permit. ZP 25-000006.
Okay, thanks very much. Those are the public hearings that will be taking up in some form tonight. We also have three different proposals for amendments to our zoning ordinance that were subject to a joint hearing between Planning Board and Land Use Committee a few weeks ago that we're taking up the discussion. We will also have, as matters of other business, a proposal by Open Space and Recreation Plan endorsement from PSOF. And with time permitting, at least a discussion or the beginning of a discussion on the Assembly Square Neighborhood Plan. So what I'd like to do first is take up the zoning amendments. Because we should get those off of our decks, because we have another joint hearing in two weeks. So what I'd like to do, I think, is Dan, I think the relevant staff person who's available to talk to some of this stuff, or is he not yet?
Hi, Michael. We have Sarah Lewis is here.
Okay, great. Sarah's here. Great, wonderful. Thank you. Hi, Sarah.
Flicking. There we go. Good evening.
Hi. So we have, we have three amendments, one of which was a citizen-led proposal and two were administration-led. So the two administration-led ones, obviously, we've already had a presentation and we know the administration's position on those. I'm wondering if you might be able to give us, to the extent that you can, because we generally ask for it, for citizen-led or developer-led proposals to amendments. The staff's position on the citizen petition, that's before us tonight as well.
Absolutely. And that's the one that's usually referred to as the dormer amendment.
Yes.
So we're, we're still doing some evaluation on the request, but at an initial glance, staff isn't supportive of the amendment the way it's written. The, to do that, I sort of have to back up a little bit, because we are in support of modifying, simplifying the dormer standards themselves. Now, a little background was the, you know, sort of these standards were written with input from our Design Review Committee at the time and from a survey of lots of dormers around the city, and what was considered to be sort of, to be good design. And that's where those numbers had come from. The effect of popping up a third story on every two-and-a-half-story house in the city to allow flat roofs is something that we're working through at the moment. So for example, if you had a dormer that went the full length of the roof and it became a shed, it would effectively add, especially on both sides of the gable, it would effectively add a flat roof in the third story. So that's something that we're still working through at the moment. Is that helpful?
It is. And I will say, your assessment kind of mirrors what mine was during the presentation by the proponent of this particular amendment. And that, that was specifically, I think there is some positive movement that we can make on dormer flexibility. But as, as you know, I've been on this board for a while, and dormers used to, when we, when dormers used to come to us, because we're in such a densely packed city, you know, dormers were always kind of a contentious issue, by in-between neighbors as to how it's going to look when I look out my window, how close are you going to be? You know, are you actually adding a whole third story, all sorts of things like that? The other concern that I, that I had was some of the flat roof, big dormers. I think there was a visual that the proponent had put forward with, you know, two dormers. One is kind of a more traditional one, and the other was kind of square and flush with the roof line. And I think the proponent said, you know, kind of what's the difference between the two of these? And I said, well, you know, one, one looks like a, like a block, and that doesn't really fit in with how we, as a city, have you know, tried to create different, you know, building types respective of, you know, the history of how we've, how we've grown. So I think, Sarah, based on what you have said, kind of representative of staff's view on this, is it might make sense to have a broader discussion and a longer-term discussion on whether and how we ought to amend our dormer requirements. But it might not be precisely what, what this applicant has, or this proponent has proposed. That's kind of my, so it's, those are my questions and kind of my thoughts on this. I'm wondering if other folks have, have some thoughts as well. Yeah, I see Lynn. And Lynn, I see your hand, but I'm going to remind everybody that I think going forward, to save my own sanity, if you could actually do the actual raised hand button, especially as, you know, multiple people can crowd into the, you know, Brady Bunch theme song of this Zoom call thing.
Absolutely. Sarah, when I was, I'm generally favorable to leaning favorably towards this, but my concern was that there was unintended consequences elsewhere in the zoning code, which it's like, oh, so we're going to allow this modification of dormers? And now all of a sudden, instead of having three stories, are we going to pop up to three and a half because of this? So my question, so I was really happy to hear you say, we need to kind of step back and think kind of more broadly about it, because I would worry about the unintended consequences from this. And is there any potential way to have someone, for lack of a better word, kind of take advantage of it?
Through, through the chair, you hit it head-on. That's, that is our concern as well. And I'm going to add too, from an urban design standpoint, let's say, in sort of every two-and-a-half-story house in the city took advantage of this, yes, we would get potentially have increased housing if that third floor was a separate unit. And so that's been part of our discussion as well. Perhaps, you know, sort of, it's allowed if it generates an additional unit. But to have a city full of boxes and lose our urban character of pitched roofs and gable ends and hips and, you know, sort of triple, if it, if it's a triple-decker, then a triple-decker has a building type all into itself. And so these are some of the things that we've been talking about internally.
Having, having, I'll just say one more thing, Michael and Sarah, and how much I support the comments that Sarah just had, is having just moved here from Arlington, Virginia, which essentially just tears everything down. So the character, the historic character of Arlington is gone and replaced by these monstrosorous single-family snout houses. And I have such joy every day walking around Somerville and seeing how Somerville is changing and evolving, certainly having, you know, explored the neighborhood 10 years ago. But the, the kind of dog-to-a-bone adherence to maintaining the historic character is so important, and the city has done such a tremendous job on this. So that was, that was my concern when, when I went through it. Like, I'm supportive of it kind of broadly, but I, I was worried about the unintended consequences and the loss of historic character. So those, those were my comments/questions.
Thanks, Lynn. Anybody, anybody else? Let's see Luke's actual hand. Okay, now, now I see.
There's my, there's my fake hand.
All right, that's what I want to see, fake hands, man.
Um, few thoughts. Um, and I guess they're both on, well, they're substance thoughts, and then there's questions about process, both how we got here and what the specific vision for not supporting this now, but doing a new process would look like. Maybe starting on process. So, um, I am on the Somerville MB email listserv. So I, this is like an instance, one of the rare instances where I had like a little window into the steps of conceptualization leading up to this by tracking the activity. And I got the sense that there was, there was back and forth with planning staff about this. And I'm, I just would be curious to hear more about that. And like, did they hear these concerns from you all, Sarah, and then not incorporate them? Or I'd love to get a better sense of, did they disagree with where you'd like this to have gone instead? Or did they not actually hear this feedback? Yeah.
Through, through the chair, the, I don't know all the ins and outs. I do believe there was a contractor that did not follow the approved drawing set in one particular instance. There is, I'm going to be a little architectural wonky now. So there our requirements were, were, you know, sort of like I said, based on input from Design Review Committee architects looking at things around the city and historically, the way dormers were made. Dormers were always an appendage, an add-on to create light. What has happened since is, you know, sort of they've gotten larger to create that additional living space on an upper story. One of the things that is our, have, was in our requirements is still is the top of the dormer has to be a foot below the ridge of the roof. That makes it more complicated from a construction standpoint. If you can frame into the ridge of the roof, then it's a lot easier to construct. You're not sort of framing out in a different kind of way. So one of those things that would be an easy enough change and only as architectural wonks would probably truly notice the difference. However, the, you know, sort of between going from the, one of the things that we had talked about internally too, originally, when we were putting the dormers forward, was having, just like you do with the facade, having a percentage of the face of the dormer be fenestration. So you actually have, you know, sort of a certain amount of windows. It was, it then got, you know, sort of during the review and the comments and the input, more specific about what those windows needed to be as far as spacing and the way they were gang together and posts in between them. And so it got very complex in an attempt to replicate, you know, what we have in the city, in our historic buildings. So there's bits and pieces that I know happened, but what the, you know, sort of the full story was, it's like, it's sort of, I, I know I'm sort of all over the place with this one. It's, it's kind of a complicated issue. So like I, I had suggested at the beginning, there are things that we can certainly make modifications to, like the ridge line is an easy one to reference. But the, you know, sort of more than 50% of the roof does add that third story, and that's sort of what, what concerns us. So the exact situation of where the amendment came from, it's, it's only hearsay that, but I, you know, sort of I know that one project was built not according to the approved plan set. And so people got caught in between, you know, sort of ownership and contractors and that sort of thing.
Appreciate that. I think I'm mostly tracking all of it. I guess, well, maybe I'll end by blending the process with the substance thought, which is just, I'm very supportive of the, of creative zoning changes that might allow us to either get more units, or it seems like here it's more getting more living space in existing units to, you know, really potentially, like this seems very tangibly like the kind of idea that helps us get more family-sized units. And so I just conceptually really like the idea. I am very sympathetic to the idea that there's a trade-off here. You know, we might get more living space, but it's less aesthetically pleasing and tough for the butters. To the extent that that is just truly a trade-off we're faced with, I'm a vote for going for more living space if it sacrifices historic character. And I guess just, so that's my substance perspective. Back on process to land the plane, I worry a little bit like if, or I'd be eager to get a better sense of what the revised this plan process would look like, that isn't effectively, you know, sending it to study for other quiet deaths sending it to study. So I don't know, if you have, if anybody had thoughts on that, I'd be open to hear it.
Through the chair, I can give an attempt. In as much as, I don't, I don't think this is something that, we, we as staff don't want this to languish. But the, I don't know yet how the, well, I don't think the Land Use Committee has taken this up as a topic to sort of understand where, where they sit in relationship of all of this and, you know, sort of the, they're the ones who, you know, adopt the zoning. And so we'll, we'll see, we can, we can offer guidance and advice. The one thing I will add is, while there is, I appreciate the comment about family-sized housing, keep in mind that also would create more expensive units. And so not necessarily solve our affordability issue, even though it might solve a livability issue for a particular family. So I, you know, sort of that's all, the affordability and the air quote luxury housing. I think luxury means new these days. But that's sort of, that's been part of our conversations internally as well.
Let's see Amelia's fake hand.
Thank you. I just want to sort of pick up where Luke left off, I think, on process. So on the one hand, I know that I was maybe the loudest voice subjecting to the new SummerNova-related zoning proposals, but I'd like to use that as a case study here to say, like, that was a group of property owners who had something they wanted that had nothing to do with the city's priorities, that they came through with a, you know, bulldozer proposal about, and we said, okay, this isn't quite right, but let's take the staff time and the resources to prioritize coming up with a version of this that might be acceptable. And I don't know what that process looked like at OSPTD. But I, I would advocate that we try to treat this process in an extremely equitable fashion. This is also a group of property owners and taxpayers who have a proposal that nobody asked for, that has some real advantages that was not on the city's priority list, but which I think, I'm guessing at least some of this word and some of OSPT would very much like to see a version of that is acceptable to staff. So I would, I would ask that you think about them sort of as two sides of the same coin in terms of citizen-led proposals, because I have my frustrations about the other process, but I think this one deserves the same degree of credence that we gave that.
Thank you, Amelia. Very, very excellent point. Thank you. Anybody else on this, or we move it forward? Seeing nobody else. What I'd like to do, based on kind of the conversations that we just had, is we're going to vote on a recommendation to the Land Use Committee on this. I think the recommendation should be a a neutral recommendation with the caveat and the suggestion that this proponent work with both the council and with staff to come up with something that might meet everybody's goals in expanding the flexibility of, you know, of dormers and additional living space, the fenestration issue, and all the things that are raised in this, this citizen petition. Because I don't think anybody here is opposed to it, you know, outright. I don't think anybody's, you know, jumping on four boar. I think everybody's kind of in the middle, including, you know, if I, if I can interpret what Sarah said, you know, where, where staff is and the administration as well. That it's a, it's a good step forward, and it's not exactly where it needs to be. But I think the recommendation to the, to the Land Use Committee could be a neutral recommendation with a suggestion that this applicant work with the relevant stakeholders to come up with something that, that the administration, you know, can, can support. Because I think we recognize the reason behind this proposal. This might just not be the perfect way to get to where we're at. If that's something that is kind of palatable to all of you, I'd like to make that motion for a neutral recommendation. Yep, I see Amelia.
Mr. Chair, I, I support everything you said. I wonder if we've taken enough of a poll of the group to say something like, the Planning Board isn't supportive of the simplification of these rules and the desire to use improvements like this to create more housing. Like, is, is a statement as strong as that something that we have consensus on? Or I'm, I'm not sure. I don't feel like we explicitly got there, so that's why I'm just trying to check.
With that, with that particular language, I'm not necessarily 100% on board, but I'm not also opposed to it.
Is there other language that you would suggest? I'm just.
Um, I, I'm, I'm not necessarily gung-ho about just advocating for more housing for the purpose of advocating for more housing. This is, you know, I've always been of the opinion that this is a regional crisis and, and, you know, or regional situation, and not one that Somerville alone should be bearing to the, you know, to the benefit of everybody who's not doing more. You know, I see that Milton just had to do a, you know, two-and-a-half override, because they're not getting to where they're going to be. And they've also fought the state on building more housing and all sorts of things like that. So the, the specific language that you proposed, Amelia, I'm, I'm not super in favor of. I'm kind of more in favor of recommendations that's a little bit more neutral and, and, and non-committal, to be honest. But, but if that's what the board is, that's what the board is.
Michael, I'm more with, I didn't raise my hand. I'm sorry.
Oh, my God. Let's go. Hi, Lynn.
I, I'm more, I'm more, I, I feel more comfortable with, with, with kind of where you landed, particularly because something that Sarah said, which I think is really important, that and I, and I see it all around my neighborhood, that, that houses are being redeveloped from single-family into two very large condos that are incredibly expensive. And so housing for housing sake doesn't necessarily create the more attainable housing for the rest of us. Like, where's my son going to live when he graduates from, from college? Or, you know, that type of, so I agree with something positive and neutral, going back to the city to look at unattended consequences, to simplify the language and to really explore other unattended consequences or other areas that we might be able to kind of clarify, to, to help facilitate the building of, of housing that we need, something like that. I don't know. But I just wanted to chime in with, with your comments.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. And I think, you know, let's see where, you know, where the, where the board is. By the way, I just got a notification saying Sarah Lewis is the host now. And all I can think of is I'm trapped in Captain Phillips. Look at me, I'm the host now. Yeah.
I'm happy, I'm happy to back off of that. I just wanted to see if there was anything more conclusive, more definitive that we were comfortable saying as a group. But if the answer is that there is not, then I support your neutral recommendation.
Anybody else want to weigh in on this before we move? Well, okay. Seeing none, the chair moves to make the recommendation that we just talked about, that tends to be a little bit, little bit more little bit more, more neutral. Seconded by Amelia. Sarah, as, as, as you are the host now, can I ask you to call the roll, please?
Absolutely, as long as I get to use jazz hands.
Oh. Do whatever you want.
All right. On the motion that the recommendation to the Land Use Committee for the so-called dormer amendment, be a neutral recommendation with an additional study suggested of live-in space versus new units, and a process to work with the stakeholders to understand the repercussions on urban design. Roll call vote. Michael Capuano.
Aye.
Amelia Avoff.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Jahan Habib.
Aye.
Michael McNeely.
Aye.
And Luke Schuster.
Present.
Present.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. The next amendment that we have is. The state building code requesting ordainment amendment to Article two and five, intent to zone. To remove conflicts with the building code. This was an administration-led amendment. We heard a presentation from staff. We, um, the testimony on this, we received, or we, we, we opened it up to written testimony. And does anybody have any thoughts or discussion points on this? Seeing. Seeing a fake hand. Lynn.
I actually thought a lot about this in the last two weeks, and it was from a comment that Luke made. Which, which I think is, which I think is important. And I had to kind of brush off some cobwebs. So there's been a lot of research. That demonstrates that higher density development is better for the environment. For water, water issues when considered on a regional basis, air quality, et cetera, et cetera. That, that we want to see more dense environments. And, and, uh, and Luke said, aren't we now, not penalizing, but if you want the density bonus. Then you kind of have to do platinum, lead platinum. And I had, you know, a back and forth conversation a little bit with, with, with Emily. And so I, I just wanna, I just wanna say, I, I really like the idea that we shouldn't be giving away density bonuses. For, for free. And. And I think that this is so far down the road that it would be really difficult to, 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 to kind of stop it. But, you know, my one suggestion to the staff might be, you know. What about a density bonus for more affordable housing, a density bonus for, you know, any number of things that, that we might. Need, need more of, open space since we're about to move, move into that. But Luke made, I think, a really important comment last week. That out of everything we talked about last week, that was the thing that really kind of stuck in me. And so a density bonus to achieve this, it just, I, I, I heard what he said and. I, I think he's right. I think we've got it a little bit backwards. But let's, you know, go forth with this. I just, I just wanted to say, I, I don't think that we should. I think we should be doing what we can to kind of support greater density in the area. And not to, not to create so many different hoops, but rather. What, what else do we need? Affordable housing feels like it, it would be a better. Get a density bonus if you're able to do twenty or thirty percent affordable housing. Anyway, I just. I just wanted to, to say that because I thought a lot about it in intervening two weeks. So thank you, uh, thank you, Luke, on that.
Uh, yeah, Emily.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and thank you, Lynn, for, again, such a thoughtful analysis. I, what I, I, I think I emailed back to Lynn and I'd like to say for the board and for the public is. This proposed amendment to the density bonus is really a placeholder. We had this density bonus for net zero buildings before. And now net zero is effectively, or net zero ready, I should say, sorry. Um, and net zero ready buildings are now effectively required by the updated building code that we have adopted. Um, and so our goal with having this update and requiring lead platinum. Is to ensure that we're not giving away a bonus for, for nothing. And, and keeping that bonus in the zoning so we can replace it with something else later. And so we're looking at a, a number of different things, uh, related to sustainability. Uh, and we're, we're always looking at, at how we can, um, support housing processes. And, and there are other, other, uh, subjects that have been raised about whether density bonus, bonuses can be used to. Uh, support our economic development policies and our, our, um, other housing, uh, uh, public art. There, there are so many things that could be considered. And so we want to look at those very thoughtfully. Before we propose something more substantive. We recognize this as, as a placeholder that we don't think is going to stop any development. We know when this amendment was first proposed, I, I think last year. That removed the density bonus, uh, initially. We had a number of developers come speak and, and say that they were concerned and that this was going to impact their projects. And so we took that to heart. We looked at those projects. We went, came back with this interim solution. Uh, and we haven't heard any concerns about that. So I think, again, this is an interim solution. We're working on a number of projects and we really look forward to coming back with you. In the coming, uh, months with some more information, um, on those sustainability projects and hopefully about other subjects as well.
Thanks. Anybody else? Give me your fake hands or give me death. Seeing none, um, with seemingly general support for the amendment, the chair moves to. Uh, recommend adoption of the proposed amendment, seconded by Amelia. Sarah, can you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Uh, Michael Capuano.
Aye.
Amelia Aboff.
Aye.
Jahan Habib.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Michael McNeely.
Aye.
Luke Schuster.
Aye.
Excellent. You know, this recommendation. Next up is requesting ordainment of an amendment to Article two of zoning ordinance to allow. To allow the building official to waive certain dimensional standards for means of egress. Uh, this is something that, again, was raised at a joint hearing with land use committee. We took public testimony. We accepted, um, written testimony through last week. Uh, staff has a minor amendment to the proposal and I'm wondering if. Somebody on staff for the benefit of the board and the benefit of the public can just explain what that amendment is.
Mr. Chair, that would once again be me. You guys are gonna get sick of me this evening. All right, I'm, I'm gonna read something to explain. So the intention of this amendment is to ensure that the construction of accessible means of egress. Meaning ramps, lifts, and elevators that allow a person who uses a wheelchair to comfortably get into their home. Is not subject to a burdensome hearing process. The amendment allows the building official, in our zoning ordinance, that means the head of inspectional services. To waive dimensional requirements such as setbacks or building width. That would otherwise prevent an elevator or ramp from being constructed. And therefore, in that situation, would require the homeowner to seek a variance. For those dimensions. Since initially submitting this amendment to council, staff is recommending that section two point four point four. Massing and height also be added to the list of dimensions that are eligible for this waiver. The purpose of this addition is to make clear that any dimension that is necessary to the construction of an elevator or ramp. Is eligible for a waiver.
All right. Thanks, Sarah. Does anybody have any comments or questions regarding this? Proposed amendment and the amendment to the amendment. No fake hands. Okay. Seeing none, the chair moves to, um, recommend approval. Of the proposed amendment as further amended by the staff. Seconded by Amelia. Sarah, can you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Michael Capuano.
Aye.
Amelia Aboff.
Aye.
Jahan Habib.
Aye.
Michael McNeely.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
And Luke Schuster.
Aye.
Okay.
Motion carries.
Thank you all very much. Um, those are the zoning amendments. Just want to make sure I'm not missing one. I think that's it, just three. That we have tonight, and those will all be sent over to land use committee. I would like to ask the applicant from three seventy-five, Harold Cohen Wade. Please be unmuted, have screens, share whatever is necessary for you to be able to join the conversation as you. Find its property.
I think many of you know the procedure, but please raise your hand and I will promote you.
Good evening, I'm Matt Snell, um, permanent counsel for federal realty on the Block Nine project. Um, just as a kind of a brief agenda here and get started. Now you got a lot of stuff on the, on the docket tonight, so we'll go quickly as we can. Um, we do have a short presentation, um, to touch on the, uh, the four comments that, that we received at the last hearing. I think that those, uh, will be taken kind of in two pieces. Um, we had some kind of landscape pedestrian design comments, and then we had comments on stormwater. Dale, if you want to bring up the presentation, we can, we can get going.
Yes, I just need permission.
We know Sarah's the host now, so it's on her.
Dale, did that work?
Yep, I'm, I'm good. Hold on, I'll make sure. Everyone can see it.
There we go. So we can just click ahead a couple. So just to kind of frame, uh, frame the discussion that we're gonna have tonight. Um, there's really four things that, that came out of the last hearing. The first is, is, you know, what the play surface in the proposed daycare covered terrace is going to be. And then some adjustments to, um, the plantings that are proposed that came out of the public comments. And along with that, a refinement of the pedestrian experience along Grand Union Boulevard. And then a discussion of, you know, enhancements to the green infrastructure that we're proposing in the stormwater design. Which kind of go above and beyond projects, design, compliance with standards and the PUD, um, as previously presented. So with that, I'll turn it over to Amy Hoken, who can go through the landscape questions. We cannot hear you, Amy.
You cannot hear me.
Now we can.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
I, I can hear you, but you are faint, so.
Can you hear me now? Okay, sorry about that. Not sure what happened there. Um, but anyway, I'm the landscape architect, um, on the project, Amy Houghton with Wagner Hodgson, uh, landscape architecture. Moving, next slide. So I just wanted to show the overall site plan and sort of the areas of focus that we'll be looking at tonight. One is that covered terrace area underneath, um, the building. It was, it's actually within the building footprint. Um, also looking at the overall planting selection of the site and then Grand Union Boulevard, which is up to the upper right. Okay, next slide. So with that being, um, said, we definitely, uh, are, we're looking at anticipating a daycare provider. At that covered terrace area. And, uh, that being said, they really wanted to provide some kind of. Uh, surface, that play surface that they could hose down. So we started looking at, uh, this X grass is something that they really, um, preferred. Uh, one, it's unfortunately due to this space being under the building, excuse me. Um, very little light gets in there and so actually having natural grass really is not an option. So, and for this, um, being able to clean off the surface easily. We, they wanted to go with this X grass and that's what you're seeing here. And ultimately, this is, uh, very different than old synthetic materials, uh, you know, turf. So really, it has no PFAs that the city, you know, is concerned about. It also meets, uh, fall, uh, requirements, ASTM, um, requirements. It also is a hundred percent recyclable, so that material can be reused down the road. Um, it's accessible, wheelchair accessible, uh, and also it is environmentally friendly. And so really the infill is made of, um, a uniform rounded quartz sand. So these places, these, you know, these, uh, I guess surfaces have come a long way. And ultimately, this X grass is really one of the safest play surfaces available today.
Amy, can I, can I ask you a question on this space specifically, right? So, you know, so I, I understand that there is intended to be a, a daycare center here and, and this might suit. You know, their purposes and, and they want to, you know, hose down the surface because they can only imagine, you know, what's, what's gonna get on this. But let's say that in any number of years that the, um. The space is no longer being used by a daycare facility and it's going to be, you know, somebody else that's not. You know, serving, uh, like a, 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 a children's population. What's, what's the ability for? You guys to be able to take up, you know, the, the, the fake grass and put it in with something that might be more suitable. For, for a non-purpose. I, I understand that, you know, regular grass isn't necessarily gonna grow under an overhang, but. You know, there are definitely things that can, you know, do better with, with shade and things like that, that might be, um, more universally accepted.
Well, I think, um, one, there is this idea of planters that'll surround that area that can have live plantings, which will help that. But the actual surface, I, I mean, we do talk about maybe down the road, there would be a restaurant, so it would have to be some kind of harder surface. So that, um, system that is proposed now can be taken up. And just, you know, a base material put in and pavers or something to that effect. And Matt, if you want to weigh in on this too, uh, please do, but.
No, I mean, I think you hit it, right? That, that what would be there in the future would really be subject to what the use is. Um, you know, if it became a retail, retail space or something else that's allowed in the district and allowed in a building like this. They, it may could be closed in potentially, who knows, right? I think that that would be then subject to, to future, future approvals with the city and things. It certainly wouldn't become, you know, a different kind of playfield, I don't think. Because I don't think there's a use there that would be that. But I, I, you could imagine outdoor seating for a restaurant, right?
Great. Okay, if you want to skip a few slides, yep. This is great. So looking at, um, you know, listening to what Tori had to say. Uh, as you can see here, we, in green, we're showing, um, native plantings that we proposed originally. And then in blue, we're showing additional plantings that we've replaced some of the non-natives. And removed some of them and replaced them with natives. And that's what we noticed, you, you see in the blue. Also note that all of our trees are native. And they meet Somerville's Pollinator Action Plan as well as the Recommended Street Tree List. So I just wanted to note that. I also, we do still have some non-natives and there are some difficult. Planting areas that are on the northern side of the building. Um, and so a lot of these plantings were selected for that reason. Um, it's because they're durable, they're um, tolerant um, to shade as well as uh, drought tolerant. So a lot of times um, non-natives can be more durable than natives. So there are still few that we've used. Moving onward, next slide. Now, looking at uh, you know, that experience on uh, Grand Union Boulevard. Originally, as you can see, there's two plans here, it was sort of before and after. Um, even though this uh, street is, has a heavier vehicular um, load, we've always designed the street for pedestrians, so I just want to note that. And as you can see in the original design, we had a green belt um, as a raised planter where we have our street trees. Um, and that helps separate, you know, the street from the, the walkway and provide a level of safety as well as interest, seasonal interest with the plantings. Um, we also provided some planters along the edge of the building and some seating for respite and some more um, interest. So moving forward though, uh, we were asked to, you know, provide more public um, and pedestrian amenities. And so as you can see by the bottom plan, um, we've provided protective intersection at Foley Street. Uh, just provides another level of safety um, for the pedestrian, as well as we ex- um, extended the raised planter. Yeah, right there, and to get more plantings. And then it added three more circular planters, large planters um, between the access doors to the transformers to activate the edge some more. Um, knowing that we cannot plant in front of these transformer doors based on EverSource's uh, recommendations um, and requirements. We've also added more seating to the area. Um, there's integral benches on the linear planters up against the building. Um, and just to provide more space for people to wait for the bus and um, more places for people to, to rest. And lastly, uh, really expanding that bulb out on um, auto workers intersect, auto workers' way intersection. Um, just to get more plants in there uh, and really buffer against the, the vehicles. So we've really added quite a bit for the pedestrian. So moving forward, I think Sarah may talk to, oh no, sorry, one more slide. And this is just, I showed this slide last meeting, it's just really to get the character and the feel of that, of that section. As you can see, that raised planter separating you from the, the vehicles, from the pedestrian standpoint. Um, and just some imagery of what those planters and benches um, could look like a- along that street. So. Next. And Sarah, do you want to talk to us? Not Sarah, sorry, Kristen.
Don't worry. Um, right, so this is a um, this is a new zoomed-in view we created. Just to reiterate, however, some students don't allow us to put anything in, probably in front of their transformer doors. Um, however, we have animated every possible space adjacent to the doors with more seating and landscaping. I think it really helped a lot. And you can see, you know, the pot we put in between the doors, pots and then benches where um, you know, people can wait. And Dale, if you go to the next slide, we can see the full elevation view. This is full elevation. With that, um, we'll turn it over to V H B to.
Thank you, Kristen. Um, again, just to reassure myself, um, I am Peter Mara, civil engineer with V H B uh, who's been helping design Assembly Row for a while, including Block Nine. Uh, given the questions raised by the board previously, we thought it was important to provide some background on Assembly Row's overall stormwater management plan, uh, including the pre-development site, the proposed drainage patterns, and also to explain a little bit about the asphalt built for Assembly Row. Um, I'll also be discussing the enhancements made to Block Nine Stormwater System since our last presentation to the board and how the system complies with all state and local standards as well as the approved master plan. Uh, so the slide shown now uh, shows the overall pre-developed drainage pattern for Assembly Row and some of the surrounding area. Uh, before the P U D was developed, uh, the Assembly Row site served industrial uses that discharged combined sewer and drainage via the eighty-four inch N W R A Somerville marginal conduit. The marginal conduit flows north on Middlesex Avenue before paralleling to Mystic River and ultimately discharging downstream of the Amelia Earhart Dam to the tidal portion of Mystic River. Uh, the areas highlighted in yellow show uh, within the Assembly P U D site as well as the Assembly Market Place nearby uh, are all tributary to eighty-four inch asphalt. As you can see, the whole pre-developed P U D site runoff was always discharging to the river. And this discharge never received any water quality treatment before the P U D was developed. The site was built on top of existing wetlands, uh, so there's also high groundwater contaminants and then underlying layer peat. Uh, the marginal conduit acts as a combined sewer overflow, uh, so known as C S O during some large storm events and high tide conditions, which has led to it being an area concern for the city and N W R A. Next slide, please, though. Uh, so Federal Realty, when developing Assembly Row, committed to mitigate and improve the P U D site's stormwater infrastructure. The major piece of mitigation was the construction of the seventy-two inch asphalt downstream of the Amelia Earhart Dam in twenty twelve. The seventy-two inch asphalt is dedicated to conveying drainage only, which has drastically reduced the flow of, to the eighty-four inch asphalt. Water quality is also provided within the P U D site prior to discharging to the seventy-two inch asphalt to ensure that stormwater is clean before it gets to the river. As shown on this slide, the drainage pattern for the proposed master plan of Assembly Row presents two major drainage areas. The yellow areas are the areas, uh, including the marketplace and some of the surrounding sites uh, that still drain to the eighty-four inch asphalt, and the blue areas represent all of the P U D that drains to the seventy-two inch asphalt. You can see how much was taken away from that eighty-four inch. The seventy-two inch asphalt was built to help alleviate potential C S Os to the river. It was helped, it was built to help attenuate peak flows and provide water quality. The P U D development went through all state and local stormwater reviews and approvals. As approved during the P U D and its N O I, the whole Assembly Row developments, including Block Nine, is part of the seventy-two inch asphalt's order conditions and must meet those conditions. Block Nine's design provides additional treatment beyond the initial approved stormwater design to meet newer city requirements. Next slide, please, Dale. So during the last few years, uh, Somerville has been updating their stormwater regulations, which are stated in the city's sites construction permit requirements. Uh, these new regulations, part of that permit, now require phosphorus removal for water quality above and beyond the state's requirements. The Assembly P U D reduces runoff flows and volumes to the Mystic River for every major storm event. Um, and now the city requires proposed developments ten-year storm event flows to be lower than that of the pre-development two-year storm event flows. The project's stormwater design will seek final engineering department approval via the site construction permit, where they'll review and approve our stormwater design. Block Nine currently is uh, designed to meet these city requirements, which results in more nutrient removal and enhanced water quality than the rest of the Assembly Row developments, while contending with some site constraints. Next slide. So as previously mentioned, there are several site constraints that we have to contend with when designing our stormwater infrastructure. Uh, those constraints include high groundwater, the layer peat, uh, potential for contaminated soils, and also the fact that it's a densely zoned urban area with zero lot lines. Uh, due to these constraints, uh, large areas of infiltration is not particularly feasible, uh, which resulted in a stormwater design for Block Nine that involves uh, best management practices that were suited for the site. Next slide. So because of these constraints, uh, we have a limited number of B and Ps at our disposal um, to help us get to um, providing those additional water quality requirements of the city, particularly of the phosphorus removal. Um, so we decided that because large areas infiltration is not feasible, we proposed a sand filter uh, that's gonna be located within the garage to collect and treat the runoff from the entire roof. Um, the sand filter that we designed is about seven thousand cubic feet large, it's about seventy-eight feet long by fifteen feet wide. Typically to provide water quality, only the first one inch of runoff is treated. Uh, the sand filter, the way that it's been sized, it's actually uh, treats the first two inches of runoff, so it actually gains additional volume to be cleaned. The green infrastructure we are proposing are permal pavers within the sidewalks to provide some filtration within the site. And we've also introduced a green roofs that will provide peak rate attenuation and will help reduce the overall previous area of the site. Slide. So in addition to the pavers and the sand filter that we previously discussed in the last hearing, uh, we wanted to highlight that the additional green infrastructure aspect of the project is the green roof uh, located within the building courtyard. Uh, the sand filter, green roof, and permal pavers will all provide the required water quality treatment. Uh, the project team is coordinate, is currently coordinating with the city engineering department to make sure that our design meets their requirements. So as a result of recent local regulations and the proposed design, uh, we're providing additional water quality above and beyond the approved master plan and state regulations that Block Nine was originally held to. Uh, next slide, Dale. So this graphic um, highlights the various B and Ps and purpose areas we have on site. Um, in the uh, light blue, we're hi- we're highlighting the sand filter that's located within the garage uh, that can ultimately connect into the city's infrastructure and Granite Boulevard right around there. Um, in the dark blue against the building, we're highlighting the permal pavers. Um, all those fall within our property line and pretty much run right up to our property line, except on Foley Street where we need to have the five-foot-wide cement concrete sidewalk. Um, and then we were also highlighted in um, sort of that Taylor's green color is the green roof within the courtyard. Um, the addition of the green roof as green infrastructure will provide additional purpose area and will help lower the peak rates and improve water quality. Each of these L I D and B and P features were selected with a lot of care, consideration, and coordination with city staff to make sure the project provides water quality and peak flow attenuation while meeting all local and state regulations. Um, so thank you, and now we'll open up to any questions.
For the benefit of me, I'm, I'm gonna stick you all to the fake hand because there are too many people on the screen for me to be able to reasonably see what's going on. Does anybody have any comments or questions for the applicant? I will just say, as, as one person who was um, raising concerns about the, the landscape issue, I, that seems to have been satisfied in um, you know, in my opinion, um, I would love to hear what my colleagues think, if anything. Okay. Yeah, all right. I see Lynn, fake hand. Thank you.
Fake hand. Um, thank you for, I really appreciated the background um, that you, you provided. Um, you said it was a brownfield site, can you tell me how it was remediated? Was the site capped?
Uh, Dale, do you have some information about that? That was all done prior to me being hired by V H B. Um, I know there were some cadenas found on certain portions of the sites.
They were all, I know they, they, they went through the, you know, the, the various A U Ls and, and, and cleaned up. I think a, a lot of it was removed. I don't believe any of it was, was capped. Um, that predates my time as well, but um, it was all done through, through state coordination.
I, I, I completely, I want to, I want to back up to say, I understand that everything that you all have done meets the standards set by um, the state and the city. Um, uh, but still, I'm, I'm trying to, anyway, um, I, I appreciate the.
And this, and this area was outside, Block Nine's outside any A U L area um, that was cleaned up. Dale, prior, go ahead, Patrick.
That, I, uh, members of the board, Patrick McMahon with Federal Realty, I, I can step in just because I probably got a little bit more history on it. Uh, in- indeed, as, as Dale points out, um, this area is outside any A U Ls, uh, it was remediated. This parcel itself happens to have been the least contaminated, the most clean of all of the parcels um, uh, that we have, uh, that have come under our ownership over at Assembly. It was not capped.
That's, that's helpful, thanks. Um, I um, I would um, I, I'm not gonna uh, oppose this proposal, I think that there's a lot uh, that can be done with it. Um, I do want to encourage Federal Realty kind of moving forward. When a site isn't capped, there is um, if, if I was at your drawing board, I could, I could sketch in the green infrastructure that would one hundred percent work at this site. So being told that it's not gonna work, um, I, I, I have to beg to differ, particularly because it wasn't capped. That being said, you all have done a lot of work on this, you've really listened to our concerns. Um, I appreciate the, the work in creating the greater uh, pedestrian um, uh, experience along Grand Avenue, um, et cetera. So I want to acknowledge, um, acknowledge that and um, and thank you for your effort.
Thank you, Lynn. Who else? Anybody else? Okay. Quick scan of my folks, I see Michael.
I follow the little hand rule, and I feel like you were gonna miss me for a second there.
No, 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 you, you, you just happen to be a weird corner for me because I've still got the uh, diagram.
Yeah, that's all good. I appreciate Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, so uh, I would like to thank the applicant for spending uh, a bunch of time uh, helping us kind of go back through the history a bit. Uh, this is a much more comprehensive um, story of, of the application, so I do appreciate that. Uh, I, I would kind of echo some of Member Richard's comments as well around not being entirely uh, satisfied with the options that could be proposed to really make this an A plus project. But I also would um, echo that I think this still is a great project, uh, when all is said and done. And, you know, since we also are kind of talking to future applicants a little bit with this, you know, I would note that although the conditions were pretty awful in this area before and the conditions being proposed and the current regulations being proposed set the bar that much higher, that doesn't mean that it shouldn't be, you know, even a step beyond that, right? I, I do think we should continue to strive for what can be better, not just being better than what it used to be or being as good as what we are being mandated to be. So as we look towards more and more of these projects coming in, I would love to see more and more uh, appreciation for the surrounding network. You know, I think at the, the last meeting, I discussed the idea a little bit of trying to react to stormwater that might be occurring in the street, right? And trying to do things like perhaps providing um, you know, beds of plantings that could absorb that water temporarily and stuff like that. I think those are ideas I'd love to kind of see in, in future applications. But again, I think this is an awesome project. I think it's in an area that uh, will benefit a lot from it being there. So I appreciate the applicant's time and attention to all this, so thank you.
Thanks, Michael. One more scan of the top left-hand corners of all of your boxes. Um, seeing none. Okay, um, thank you all very much. Thank you for the applicant team, thank you. Uh, obviously to, to staff and, and, and my colleagues for, I think, bringing this to a good place where we can move forward with it. Um, we have three votes to take on this application, so I'm going to go one I want as we need to. So for the site plan approval, which is um, Z P twenty-four zero 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 one will make. Following public testimony, review of the submitted materials and deliberation of the considerations outlined by the ordinance, I move to approve with the conditions outlined in staff memorandum. The site plan approval, the development eight-story general building in the Assembly Square mixed-use district uh, seconded by Amelia. Sarah, can I have a roll call?
Absolutely, on the motion, um, Michael Capuano.
Aye.
Amelia Aboff.
Aye.
Jahan Habib.
Aye.
Michael McNeely.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
All right, with unanimous vote.
Um, special permit, Z P uh, twenty-five zero 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 three four. Following public testimony, review of the submitted materials and deliberations of the required considerations outlined by the ordinance, I move to approve with the conditions outlined in the staff memorandum, the special permit for relief from the requested development standards in the. in the uh A S M B, seconded by Amelia. Sarah, please.
Absolutely. Michael Capuano. Amelia Aboff. Jahan Habib.
Jahan, either?
Yes, I.
Sorry, we didn't hear you the first time. Michael McNeely. Lynn Richards. Luke Schuster.
And for the major amendment, Z P twenty four zero 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 one two four, public uh following public testimony reviewing the materials and deliberations, uh considerations outlined by the ordinance, I move to approve with conditions in staff memorandum, the major amendment in existing P U D, which is case planning board two thousand six dash five nine. Will incorporate block nine design guidelines, uh seconded by Amelia.
Roll call vote. Michael Capuano. Amelia Aboff. Jahan Habib. Michael McNeely. Lynn Richards. And Luke Schuster. Sorry, you guys keep hopping around on my screen. I understand what Michael's talking about. Mr. Chair, that's another unanimous vote.
Thank you. Well, I believe those are all the votes we take for this particular application. All of which have have passed. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I am going to call. You know, let's do seventy four Middlesex Avenue. If we can have the applicant and the applicant's representatives and team unmuted and shared and anything that we need to have.
All right, do I have everyone, team?
Team, if everyone could just raise their hand. Sarah, Tom Leoni is part of the team. Mallory Segundo is going to is, she's from my office. She's gonna run the PowerPoint, so she's very integral.
Okay, so she needs permission to, okay.
Thank you.
Right, hopefully that works.
I I think it popped up on my screen. I think so.
And do we have everybody that we need?
I bo- uh I believe so. I I'm looking, I think Mallory, because Mallory's gonna run the uh slide. Oh, there she is, and I see Tom. We also have our architect and our builder on, but I don't know if we necessarily, they're here just to listen, and you may not need them, but uh I can proceed if you'd so choose.
Absolutely. And as a reminder to everybody um who might not have been part of the planning board before, uh planning board meetings, please, if you're gonna speak, introduce yourself in your, you know, name and affiliation or address.
Well, thank you, Chairman Capuano, members of the planning board, attorney Ann Vigorito this evening for twenty four Broadway, Somerville. I'm joined by, excuse me, Tom Leoni of Leoni Donut Shops, AKA Dunkin' Donuts. Uh I have uh Mallory Sabano from my office, who will be running our PowerPoint. And as I said, we also have our contractor and architect, who may or may not be necessary for this specific specific presentation. So with that, I will begin. Uh Mallory, if you could put up the first slide, that'd be great. Mallory, are you able to begin the PowerPoint?
Yeah, I'm so sorry. I had something pop up on my computer settings and I thought I enabled it. But give me one moment. I apologize.
I can begin a little bit, and Mallory will put up our first slide anyway. But just to give you a little bit of a generic history, seventy four Middlesex Ave is actually the exact place where Dunkin' Donuts was before. It was a freestanding Dunkin', I think many of you are familiar with it. Uh right near the Somerville District Court, um and across from the Assembly Road Market area. So that it was demolished, and as we know, there's a lab building there right now. I I believe when, I was not involved with the lab building when they received their special permit, or their permits, I should say, for the building. But the intent was always to um have Dunkin' Donuts come back and be at this ground level area. So and as stated, we are proposing a formula business principal use. So first slide is, this is the actual building, just to familiarize everyone, uh seventy four Middlesex Ave. Uh Mallory, next slide, please. Our team members, uh the applicant Leonis Donut Shop, I am the attorney, our architect James Smith is here. Engineer is Sail Away Engineering as well. Uh next slide, Mallory. Little bit more of a background, uh Leonis is proposing to establish a formula business principal use. The proposed business is Dunkin' Donuts. We all run on Dunkin's, right? Which will be located on the ground floor of the lab building at seventy four Middlesex Ave. As I said before, this previously was the Dunkin' Donuts site, um but it was displaced due to the construction. Next slide, Mallory. The space will be one thousand eight hundred and thirty square feet. There'll only be street parking available. The previous site did have on uh did have onsite parking. It will it will continue to provide pedestrian walkways through the development site. The addition of a Dunkin' Donuts will help spread out the concentration of the formula businesses. Next slide, Mallory. This is site plan. Next slide, Mallory. Sorry, this is a site plan. Apologies. The other one was the floor plan. And next slide. This is just some of the prototypes of uh what the Dunkins will look like. You know, I'm sure many of you have seen them. Uh this is what the proposal will be for the Dunkins. Next slide, Mallory. And next slide. Sees some of the materials. And final slide. This is the street view of the materials as well. Next slide, Mallory. So we are respectful requesting approval, a special permit for a formula business. We did have a neighborhood meeting, uh which was hosted on December seventeenth of twenty twenty four uh with Council McLaughlin, uh the applicant team, we had it on Zoom. There were attendees, but uh there were no comments or questions from the public. This often happens with many of the neighborhood meetings. I'm starting to see people just wanna tune in and see what it's all about and I never received any negative uh comments or concerns after the fact of, you know, we had a neighborhood meeting report. But our contention is that, you know, we meet the formula business uh here. The proposed signage for the restaurant, proposed space one will be aesthetically prominent and it will fit into the larger architectural architectural character of the lab building at seventy four Middlesex Ave. Because if you haven't seen it, it is quite, you know, uh Mallory, why don't you put that first slide back up. It's it's a statuesque building. It's you know, definitely an asset to the Assembly Road neighborhood. I'm gonna conclude at this time thinking that there may be some questions or comments from the board and I can, you know, take those. This is a pretty straightforward uh special permit, you know. The uh it it's for the formula business, so I I figure this is a good time to stop and you know, see if there's questions uh obviously from the board.
Attorney Vigorito, I appreciate it. I don't have any comments or questions right now. I don't know if my colleagues do, but this is a public hearing. So what I do wanna do is if there's anybody out there in in the attendee list, does anybody have anything they'd like to raise before I open it up? Okay, seeing none. From my board, I would like to open it up to public testimony. For anybody that wants to speak in support of the application, please raise your hand and I will call on you in the order in which I see. I do see a hand raised for Thomas Leoni, but I believe Mr. Leoni is part of the presentation.
Oh, he is. Maybe he didn't lower.
No, that's o- that's okay. That's okay. Anybody else? I see Tori, Antonina.
Hi, uh Tori Antonina, sixty five Boston Street. So everyone likes the Dunkin' Donuts, right? Um, I mean, there's a lot of them. You know, since this is a special permit for a formula-based zoning and we, you know, I mean, formula-based business and we have so many Dunkin' Donuts and for context, right now I'm listening to the the land use committee and on the summer Nova project. And um there's a pretty strong CBA that's coming out of there. And sometimes I wonder about our, like, these types of businesses, a formula-based business. Could there be any contingency on like a partnership with the Mystic River Watershed? You know, it would would there uh would the uh applicant be willing to write a check for Mystic River Watershed Association? We're doing great things in the area. Uh it would be relevant since it's right there. I mean, God bless the Union Square Neighborhood Council. I just wanna say we're getting significant funds from developers. I know this might be a small development, but uh fifteen thousand dollars to uh Mystic River Watershed would be so much appreciated. Or at least um sort of forming a partnership and maybe purchasing some trees to plant on the river. We don't really have a neighborhood council um tuning into this area, so feel like a lot of development's happening and we're and we're not really getting community benefits, but I bring it up as a suggestion and a perhaps a token of goodwill um on behalf of the Mr. Leoni. And, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tori. Anybody else that wants to provide testimony in support of the application? Going once, gone twice. Seeing none, I'm gonna close that portion of the public hearing. I'm gonna open up to anybody that wants to speak in opposition to the application or otherwise express concern. Please raise. Going once. Gone twice. Seeing none, I close that portion of the public hearing and bring it back to a discussion between the planning board and the applicant and staff. I just wanna raise one one brief thing um in response to the testimony that uh that we did receive uh a second ago, uh the 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 planning board cannot require and cannot condition um community benefits or or anything like that. Uh that is a separate process that is outside of our jurisdiction and 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 we would be in basically be in trouble if we tried to obligate someone to do that. That is that is certainly a worthwhile endeavor and it's worked well in areas where applicants can work with other stakeholders who are not the planning board, but the planning board can't require that. As much as, as much as I would like to be able to put uh a lot of other your requirements on on applicants uh and expand the ability of the planning board to to do things like that, unfortunately, under the law, we we can't. But I I will just say this to me as a as a formula-based business. And 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 maybe Mr. Leoni would know, you know, more than more than I would. Are there any other Dunkins in Assembly Square right now?
Chairman Capuano at DM Vigorito, no, there are not. And I can tell you this, so, you know, this there was, this was Dunkin's and this was Mr. Leoni's Dunkin'. And, you know, lab building says, you're coming back, you know, we don't wanna displace you. But it it took a lot longer for him to get there, you know, COVID happened and, you know, construction. But I will tell you this, I mean, I I, you know, I do quite a bit of law at Somerville District Court, and I do hear, hey, when are we getting our Dunkin's?
I was just, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, I don't, I don't practice in district court very often. Uh but I can't imagine people aren't looking for a for the Dunkin' Donuts on the street.
And in fairness, you know, there is Starbucks, there's Cafe Nero, there's Tete. You know, it's nice to have everything, like you really, you you get to have choices, which I I think is a nice thing.
And all those are formula businesses that are in. Um, so I I mean, as as one member, I, you know, I have, I obviously have no problem at all putting you know, the the Dunkin' Donuts back where it was, uh in light of the fact that there are, you know, multiple other, you know, formula businesses. Most of Assembly Square are formula businesses um in in various capacities, so I I don't I don't have a problem with this one. All you guys are good in my book, uh but I'd like to see where my members are. Anybody else have any comments, questions of the applicant or of staff of concerns? I see no fake hands. So with that, following public testimony review.
Mister, Mister Chair.
Did I miss, did I miss you? Oh, dude, you have, it's it's a light-skinned hand on a yellow background, Jahan. That's that's my problem. I'm I'm not even succeeding in this.
Mister Chair, I will make the change to the color scheme, so that way it's more visible.
Don't, 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 that's on, that's on me. That's on me.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um so I I just wanna echo what you mentioned. Uh first of all, thank you to the applicant team for the presentation. I'm also in large part supportive of uh having a Dunkin' Donuts on this site. Uh I do have two questions. The first question is around outdoor space and outdoor seating, whether there's any plans to have some outdoor, you know, outdoor uh seating available adjacent to the to the Dunkin' Donuts site. That's the first question. And the second question is that I recognize that that there was a Dunkin' Donuts prior. Um however, Assembly Square has changed significantly. Um are there any thoughts to um you know, ensuring that, you know, the accessibility uh, you know, is available, not just to the building and adjacent buildings, but any any consideration towards making sure that the site is a success. So I'm coming from a more of a success perspective and also to what Mister Chair mentioned earlier around other formula businesses uh being successful. However, from what I understand of Assembly Square, they're 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 in a separate uh slightly separate location. So we'd love to get some thoughts on both items.
All right. Hi, this is Attorney Vigorito. So relative to outdoor space, they would love to have it, but I don't think the landlord, because of where they're located, it it's feasible. You know, we're starting, you know, a lot of the Assembly Square coffee shops do have, you know, you know, Starbucks has outdoor seating, Cafe Nero. I don't think Tete does, if I'm not mistaken, but because of where they're located in the building, it it's not feasible. They would love to. And um I just wanna make sure I understand the second part of that question. Are you asking if it's um accessible?
Right, so I'm I'm thinking beyond the building itself. Um, you know, there's there's significant development activities, I'm sure you're aware of. That's happening. Um so I just wanna make sure that it becomes a a a an integral go uh component of not just, not just the neighborhood, but the subneighborhood. And if there's any thoughts given to that, just because we obviously want, you know, the the Dunkin' Donuts location to be successful, both commercially and also serving the residents, visitors, and folks who work in the in the adjacent areas.
Yes. Oh, yeah, I mean, there, you know, it'll be, it'll be completely accessible to everyone. It's not just people in the the lab building. No, you know, like I said, you know, I I I will perpetually hear from, you know, uh the people at the Somerville District Court, when's Dunkin' Donuts coming back? Do you know? Do you know? And as I said, I said before, you know, you know, you know, you you go out with your friends and who wants coffee at Starbucks? And who's like, no, I like Cafe Nero. And then, you know, we have the diehard Dunk fans who, you know, it it's, there's something for everyone now in that neighborhood, but um, I just want to be clear, it's not just for the lab building, it's just that's where they're located, because their previous location, they were the only thing on the site.
Understood. That's very helpful, Attorney Bigorito. Thank you so much, and thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you. And any other questions, just let me know.
Sarah, what's up?
Um, thank you. I might be able to add a little bit of context if that would be helpful. So Seventy-four Middle Sacks is also right next to the Kensington Park. That is base, is right where the underpass, under ninety-three comes out and then connects to Foley Street, um, which takes you directly to the T Station. So this location is very much connected as, as part of the, the neighborhood plan and the larger neighborhood. And will have a lot of um, biking and pedestrian coming and going a- across that park site. And to the, the idea of the, the outdoor seating, while it might not be immediately adjacent to the Dunkin' Donuts, there is certainly gonna be a lovely brand-new park right, right next to it.
Thank you so much, Director Lewis. I really appreciate the other additional insight, and thank you, Mister Chair, as well.
Yeah. My idea for fake hands has foiled me now like two or three times today, since I'm just making sure I'm not missing anybody. Yell, I am. Okay, cool. While the public testimony, review of the submitted materials and deliberation of required considerations and findings outlined by the ordinance, I move to approve with conditions outlined in the staff memorandum. The request to establish a formula business principal use in the ASMB, seconded by Amelia. Sarah, roll call, please.
Absolutely. Roll call, vote. Seven, um, seventy-four Middle Sacks. Michael Capuano.
Aye.
Amelia Eboff.
Aye.
Jahan Habib. I saw him say aye.
Did you say aye?
Thank you.
Apologies.
We need it recorded, my friend.
Um, Michael McNeely.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
And Luke Schuster.
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, members of the board. Have a great evening. Good night.
Okay, up next on the block is three sixty-two to three sixty-eight Mystic Avenue. If I could please have the applicant team present themselves.
Alright, I think I have, um, Randy Hart and Yulila Kier. Um, who does one of you need screen sharing?
I do.
Alright, let me know if that worked for you.
Uh, Sarah.
Yes.
You have, you apparently abused your position as host. And you stuck Amelia in the nether regions of the public.
Oh, no. Oh, my goodness.
You are pulling a very, very bad co-host right now. Not a great look.
Oh, Amelia, are you back? I am so sorry. So sorry.
What, what did I do?
This is, this is what you get.
This is why you guys like Steve best.
Keep talking, you're gonna wind up in Salvador. Jesus.
Were you ready to go?
Yes.
Um, good evening. I'm Randy Hart with VHB. Um, pitch hitting tonight for Patrick Dunford uh, on the traffic piece of the by, and um, the Colonel had a last-minute engagement that he, he had to attend to, so he couldn't make it. So Yulila is here in his replacement. Yulila, we, we're both pitching last minute, um, so I don't know if it's better for, for me to run through the slide, Yulila, and uh, you be there for questions regarding anything other than traffic? Does that make sense for you?
Okay, but I, I also can help you if you want, whenever you want.
Whatever you prefer. I, I wasn't sure what the message to you was, but uh, you wanna, you wanna go through the, the ones that says, okay?
Yes, I was spurring myself. Well, hello, sir Chairman, and hello, everyone. I would like to represent um, Simplicity Dispensary. Um, it is a proposed adult use cannabis retail facility located at three sixty-two, three sixty-eight Mystic Avenue in Somerville. Um, and it's situated in intersection of Mystic Avenue and Grand Street and directly accessible from I ninety-three. Our location offers ease of access for customers while minimizing impact on local residential traffic. Um, what else? So the special permit, we would like to have a cannabis retail sale use in MR five zoning district. The project description, reoccupancy of currently vacant uh, building space. It's a merger of two commercial units into single unit, approximately twelve fifty square feet. Adult use recreational marijuana dispensary, day points of sale within building. Um, the house community agreement we had signed on November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three. And it, we had like neighborhood meeting as well on June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four. So here's the logos map. So the subject property is highlighted in red on the Provider JS map from the Somerville JS database. Um, the site occupies parcel sixty-nine D one, strategically positioned at the corner of Mystic Avenue and Grand Street, just west of Interstate ninety-three and directly adjacent to the Mystic Avenue on ramp.
So in terms of traffic, um, the study area that was decided by VHB with assistance of the city involved the intersection immediately to the north of us, which is Grant Street, in the intersection immediately to the south of us, which is Wheatland Street. Um, Grant Street's one-way and an easterly direction, unsignalized. Wheatland is one-way and an eastern direction, but is signalized. So those were the two focused locations where we look at existing and future conditions to see what, if any, impact the project would have. Um, we've prepared a transportation access plan in September third, twenty-twenty-four. We prepared the traffic impact study in February twenty-twelve. And both plans were thoroughly reviewed by the city and approved essentially at this point. This is, I, I reversed direction on this slide, so I apologize. We're looking west instead of east. And this is just to show you the retail plaza up close. This is the inside of the, you know, what will be the dispensary. And there's a number of things going on around it. There's some on-street, on, on-site parking today, which is uh, thirteen parking spaces in, to the north. As you can see, there's one on-street parking space. There are twelve on-street parking spaces along Mystic, just on the next block across Grand Street. There's also parking in the rear of the site. Uh, two of those spaces will be utilized for the dispensary for employee parking. This is the same plan, but it incorporates um, a different roadway configuration than what's out there today. Mast D O T currently has a plan that's fully designed and I think is intended to go to construction in the near, near future. And it does some modifications to Mystic Ave, including creating a, an only-bike bus lane uh, in the uh, southern direction. And essentially taking two lanes down to one for vehicular traffic. It contemplates a host of pedestrian uh, enhancements at the intersection of Wheatland Street and Grand Street with new crosswalks, new pedestrian push buttons and, you know, audible, audible um, types of situations. So that it will greatly enhance the pedestrian environment and crossing ability at that location. And this one goes back to Yulila.
So this is our layout. It's designed for controlled access commercial facility with secure entry, product handling and dedicated sales floor. The main entry point is located along Mystic Avenue, where customers first enter the security check-in area, which spans approximately fourteen feet by eight feet two inches. This area is equipped with existing fixtures and its primary customer access point. From the check-in area, customers enter the sales floor, a large open space designed for retail activity. This space includes several position, uh, proposed fixtures and counter areas located centrally and slightly toward the right side of the room. Two existing entrances and exits are located along the front wall facing Mystic Avenue, allowing controlled traffic flow in and out of the building. The easterly door is for emergency exits. The um, to rear left of the sales floor, there is gonna be walled measuring approximately nine feet two inches by seven feet five inches, made with a metal DEA cage and plywood. Um, adjacent to the wall, um, is a small security room providing oversight for the backhouse operations. The product intake area is located in the rear right of the building, accessible from the rear parking lot through the common area, like a hallway. This intake area facilitates receiving and processing goods. Um, within this zone, um, there is a dedicated office and a bathroom. Hmm, so we are, um, the facility includes the fire alarm, pull box, horns sharp with light and sprinkler hats. We're gonna have a one hundred percent coverage for security, ninety-day security footage backup. We have a security system with the panic buttons and a backup alarm. Um, okay, so, uh, one second. So the current facade consists of an aging storefront with the faded paint and graffiti and inconsistent signage, as you see. So hmm, our proposed front elevation is gonna have like a modern and sleek professionally branded storefront for Simplicity Dispensary. We're gonna have a bold signage with uh, Simplicity logo and name clearly displaying, displayed above the entrance. And um, yeah, that's, that's it. Um, so the next steps for us is gonna have like a site, site plan approval. Um, administrative, minor site plan approval, and then Somerville Licenses Committee um, license to operate cannabis retail sales use and Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission license.
That's the last slide, yeah. So I think that wraps up our presentation. We're happy to try and answer any questions if there are any.
No, I appreciate the presentation. Thank you all very much. Um, I'm going to reserve any comments until after um, we open up to the public, but does anybody have anything they would like to raise in advance? Okay. Seeing none, what I'd like to do is open up this application, um, a public testimony to anybody that would like to speak in support of the application. Please raise your hand. Going once, going twice. Seeing none, I'm gonna open up to anybody that wants to speak in opposition to the application. Yeah, I see Tori's end. Tori, you on? Tori, you still here?
Mister Chair, I think we lost Tori.
No, um, well, I see, I see her hand.
Okay, there we go. Hi, uh, Tori Antonino.
Okay, hi.
Hi, Tori Antonino, sixty-five Boston Street. I, I don't, I meant to uh, not speak in opposition, so um, it, I feel like we need another cannabis shop, like, we need a hole in our head, just when there's so many food deserts around. But perhaps this location is, is fine for one, so um, I do speak in support. But generally, what, when is it? When is it gonna stop when we, you know, have cannabis shops where people can't get groceries? So that's my, that's my two cents thing.
Thank you. Anybody else? Going once, going twice. Close that portion of the public hearing. Um, and bring it back to discussion by and between members of the planning board, staff and the applicant. Um, Sarah, it is my understanding that we are still under a moratorium for additional uh, cannabis uses in the city, and this particular applicant was the, was the last um, the last one through the door before the moratorium was put in place. Is that, is that right?
Uh, Mister Chair, that is true. The person better suited to answer that and provide any more detail is Emily Hutchings, who is the case planner on this. So Emily, if you're still there.
Emily, because, because I, I will say, I, I, I share the, the concern of, of Tori, as I think um, I will speak for other members of, of the board, but I think several of us have expressed some degree of another one. Um, in, 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 in not DJ Khalid fun way.
Mister Chair, through you, Emily Hutchings, uh, senior planner for PPZ. Uh, I understand and, and I think many of us uh, share your concern as well, that one of the reasons for a moratorium is we recognize that we, we don't know how many of these businesses Somerville can support. I do want to note that this, this business is um, it, it serves a population that is not um, immediately served uh, by other cannabis retailers. There are multiple in Davis Square. There are multiple further down on Broadway. Um, but uh, this is the closest business, I believe, to uh, East Somerville and Winter Hill. Uh, where there are generally much, uh, much fewer uh, marijuana retail businesses. Uh, there is still um, currently a moratorium uh, on host, new host agreements for marijuana retailers. Uh, that expires at the end of this month. We are looking to extend that uh, for uh, at least a few months. Uh, we are in the middle of a, a, an economic study, uh, so we can better understand how many of these businesses um, the city might be able to actively sustain. Uh, we do want to support um, our, our existing businesses that do already have host agreements, uh, most of which are uh, equity applicants and priority applicants in one way or another. Uh, so I think follow, that, that study is uh, set to wrap up by the end of June. Uh, following, we will be uh, able to provide some additional policy recommendations uh, for the mayor and for city council. Um, that uh, that may or may not impact uh, whether other retailers um, might get host agreements. Uh, so I look forward to providing an update at that time. Um, in the meantime, um, I don't think we have any uh, concerns about this application. Um, it's fairly standard. We have all of the standard conditions of approval included, including multiple mobility-related conditions, and I'm glad to take questions on those if there are any.
Mike, uh, I do, I do have none of that particular uh, aspect of conditions only, but one of the conditions that we usually um, do put on uses of this type is the, is the um, uh, appointment-only um, application. And we have discussed generally as a board, so whether we wanted to amend that in a, in a more formal way, we have not yet done so. Um, one of the things we have done, and I would like to um, make sure that we're acting in alignment with how we have treated uh, uses like this previously, that if um, an applicant wants to move past a, an appointment-only um, condition to, to be just simply walk in, that they be in operation. I think the, the standard we imposed last time was six months for the folks in, in Union Square. Just want to make sure that if we move forward, we're doing the same thing here.
Um, Mister Chair, through you, that could be an additional uh, condition if you would. like to expand the appointment only condition to allow it to change at the six month mark at this time. What happened?
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if I necessarily wanna include that in the condition. I, I wanna make, I wanna make the applicant aware that if they do want to do that, that is something that we have entertained after a period of time as a, as a, as a request to the board and something that we have approved in the past, if, if this is something they'd be interested in. I just wanna make sure that any applicants of this use type are aware of the fact that there are people that are applicants in, 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 in use, you know, permanent holders that have petitioned the board for exemptions and, and amendments to conditions in the past and that I would like to make sure that we treat everybody the same. Anybody else, any comments or questions of this particular applicant? I see Luke's fake hand, Amelia's fake hand, Michael's fake hand. I'm gonna go with Luke first.
Actually, you know what? Can I yield to someone else for a second?
Yeah, absolutely. By the way, all of your screens are moving around on me. It's, it's super confusing. So who's, I, I, okay, the next person I see, I'm sorry, is, is Lynn up at the top left for me. So I'm just gonna recognize Lynn first.
Um, and I guess this is the question for Emily. What restrictions does the city of Somerville have about having a cannabis or alcohol or otherwise smoking use so close to a park where children play? So for me, I under, I read the mobility report and it's like, it's not necessarily pedestrian friendly, except we did talk about really beefing up the pedestrian access underneath the highway to connect the park to Assembly Square, but I, I'm looking at the site narrative and it looks as though it's four hundred feet and in quote unquote more progressive cities, they have regulated these types of uses to be a quarter mile, a thousand feet, two thousand feet from places where children play and you saw that there's a baseball field and other fields. So my concern is, and again, this Emily, this is why it goes to you and not for the, for the candidate. It's really close to a field where children are. Is there, is there anything on it within the city? Or if we have to let this go, can I then put a placeholder to say maybe the city could take this up? Kind of in the future, that liquor stores, cigarette stores, cannabis stores are a thousand feet, two thousand feet from places where children conjugate.
Mister Chair, through you, this is Emily. Their Somerville does not currently have any spatial requirements related to the these types of businesses with controlled substances in parks. There are requirements that marijuana retailers are, at least I believe it's five hundred feet. It might be three hundred away from schools, K through twelve. There are other communities that have limits placed on locations that are close to parks, close to daycares, childcare facilities. I, I, I think my honest perspective on that is if Somerville were to place limitations on that, we would all knock out most of the existing cannabis retailers right now and probably a good chunk of liquor stores as well. I, I do understand and, and respect the concerns and that is something that could be brought up at a future time. It's just not part of our regulations right now.
Thank you, Emily, for, for that. You know, and in the same meeting, we've been asked to review the Parks and Rec and Open Space Plan for the city of Somerville, which, you know, in the opening paragraph on that is, you know, we are dense city with not a lot of open space. So I do, and here's this cannabis dispensary coming up, you know, not quite adjacent to a significant recreation area. So I guess my request to, to you, Emily, if I'm able to do that or through, through Michael, is that we, we pick up that kind of teasing out that kind of regulation, kind of moving forward. I mean, if we're gonna be family friendly with our housing, we should align that with controlled substances as, as well. And we don't have a lot of parks and open space. So I, I actually don't think it would be all that difficult. Anywho. Less for the applicant, more for Emily. Thank you for that background.
Yeah, of course. Oh, Lynn, I can just say nothing. I'm pushing back on your suggestion. I can think of like eight or nine liquor stores off the top of my head that are within walking distance of a park right now. And I will neither confirm nor deny that I, when I was in high school, used to know exactly where the controlled substances places were close to the parks that I used to hang out in. So I'm not, yeah.
I mean, we talk, we're, we're talking about like lead ND aspirational platinum, a, a, all of this. It's like, well, this is another piece where this is another kind of aspirational requirement to help support the health and wellbeing of Somerville residents. So I hear you, my friend.
Right by a park, do not close them down.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Michael.
Of course. Who else? Anybody else? Uh, Emily.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I have a couple of questions for the applicant team and for staff on two or three topics. First, typically, I think when we have had these presentations, there has been more of an emphasis on both planning for security, planning for loading and sort of payment systems, and also community benefits and anticipated hiring practices. And I don't think we sort of heard any of those pitches in this application. So I'm curious, I've always thought that was a good feature of this process to sort of understand how these retailers are preparing to be part of the communities that they're situated in. And if this applicant comes back to us at another time, I would be interested to know if they would like to present on sort of any of those features that we commonly see across these types of applications. With respect to the other topic, I do have some questions and concerns around loading and security as has often been, you know, the case when we review these applications. I see that there are a number of data points that mobility noted are missing from the transportation materials that have been provided. So I, I for one would like to make sure we have a complete application from that perspective before moving forward. I don't know if we'll have that for the next time that we're scheduled to meet. I'd also like to understand better from the applicant, what the plan actually is for accepting deliveries and for managing. You know, we've typically heard a lot of concern around security at deliveries. It looks like there's only one street space that's actually on this block. I understand there is an intention to have deliveries happening around the back of the building, but those spaces are co-located with spaces that are earmarked for employee parking. And I'd like to understand from the applicant or the applicant engineer, whether this building is overall in compliance with its parking requirements, because in trying to compare the plan that was shown at the staff parking location with the Google Maps view of the building, it looks like one or two of those spaces have big painted letters that say fire exit, do not park here. And so I'm not sure if those are the spaces that this applicant is proposing to use or if those are spaces utilized by other businesses. But I'd like to make sure there is agnostic of employee parking, sufficient access for loading in the locations that loading is being proposed.
I would like to reply on the security concern that we are gonna have like a vibration protection in a vault, which will like protect the roof. Um, that's, that's all I can say. From the security system, and we're gonna have like a security cameras, one hundred percent coverage.
And I can reply to the transportation. Yes, the city has asked us for a few new things and we are in the process of putting it together, including new counts that will be done next week. So we will have that turned around, you know, within probably a couple of weeks is what I anticipate at this point. And related to the parking, I, I don't know the answer off the top of my head because I wasn't the engineer on the project. But this is an existing retail center. All we're doing is replacing retail that was there formerly with retail that's going in there now. So I, I don't know that, you know, anything changes from a retail perspective and from a zoning parking perspective, but we'll get an answer for you for the next hearing.
Thanks so much. I'm sorry, I just, the plans that you provided don't include the slide that you had in here about which two spaces. I think we're going to be the employee parking spaces. So what I'm looking for is for you to confirm that your two aren't the ones that are labeled fire exit, do not park here.
Yeah, it's these two spaces here, which, again, maybe this plan doesn't have all of the detail on it. So I'll, I'll take that back and again, we'll report back to you.
Thanks very much.
Of course.
Anybody else before we? Let's see Luke's head.
Thanks, Mister Chair. In review, in reviewing this, I had missed the, the proposed requirement of walk in appointment only, sorry. And um, having that come up just now jolted me back to the several hours we spent on this last summer, which, um, I don't know, it was fun for anybody. So I'm slightly hesitating to bring it up, but I just, it just seems crazy to continue requiring appointment only in an environment where the major concern we all have is actually a strong sense that Somerville can't support fifteen of these businesses. So, um, I, I would love to. I am not supportive of that condition at this point. It just seems, it just seems like a really classic example of sort of continuing a status quo requirement that nobody would have created if we were starting it today. Just approving this one, which we might not be doing anyway today, I understand that. But if we were just to approve it and not have that requirement, I understand the equity concern for the existing establishments. So I, you know, I'd be very up for, before getting to a vote, thinking on our, uh, together about how we advance equity across these businesses without continuing that this requirement that just didn't seem like, make any sense, you know, several years in. I'll, I'll leave it at that for a second. I see Emily's hand. Maybe, maybe she has a thought about it.
So Luke, I, I, I'll just run real quickly as to why I posed it. Well, not proposal, but, 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 you know, looking at this particular condition and, and, and kind of centering it is this is the last applicant of this use type before the moratorium was imposed. So I, I, I think I would certainly be open to a discussion about changing that for any applications coming following the lifting of a moratorium. But I don't feel comfortable taking away a, a condition that every other applicant of this use type pre moratorium was, was subject to. I, I think that's that, that is something that could be challenged, I think, in, in, in litigation for going against our previous practices without a, a, a reasonable you know, reason to do so at this stage when everybody else is subject to the same thing. Among, amongst a lot of things, but so I, 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 I get where you're coming from. It, it might not be a condition that we might want to impose going forward. But for all similar uses pre-moratorium, I'm, I'm, I'm one who's of the opinion that we should hold steady for the, for the purpose of consistency until we come out with a, a review by the, by the city and by the board as to what we want to do moving forward. That's, that's why I was kind of centering that particular one for the, for this applicant. It's been a while since we've had a, a, a use applicant of this type. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at. But Emily, I wanna make sure you have a chance to speak as well.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Through you. Yes, this, I think this was a condition that mobility discussed very carefully and they believed not just from a point of equity, but also from a point of data entry, that this could be valuable. I think this is what we're looking at right now and that it is not just about allowing protection for mobility impacts, but also so the city and the businesses can understand when appointments are happening, when businesses are, are getting more business. I know, aside from cookies last summer, the, at least the planning department has not heard any concerns from any of the other businesses about this condition. I'm not responsible for enforcement of this condition, but I do know that at least one business has found that an easy way to still comply with the condition, but allow for flexibility is simply to have an iPad or something where clients can come and just sign up for an appointment as soon as they walk in the door. And that is something that's acceptable to the mobility division. It's something that's acceptable to ISD within the parameters of the condition. So there is some flexibility in there. That said, I don't, I don't think it would, there would be significant concern if the board were to not impose this condition.
Mister Chair, if I might follow up question. Um, I'm realizing, I don't even remember precisely the current state of things. Am I right that when we had this last summer, we landed on a, an understanding, and maybe is the language, that there was an open door for existing cannabis retail establishments that had been open for at least six months to come to us and ask to have it removed? And then part two to that is to the extent that's everybody's recollection, have any come to us and asked for it removed? And have, have we approved any or just no one's come to us actually?
The only, the only, the only one that I'm aware of, Luke, is the folks in, in Union Square. They were, they were the sole business owners that I can recall that had been in business for greater than six months and had come to us for an exemption that we granted.
That's helpful. So.
As, as, I, I, I think kind of pairing with what Emily just said, everybody else seems fine with the current condition. It's, it's kind of working as a matter of business.
And there actually is one in Somerville now that, so actually one of, of our fourteen or whatever, that's probably not the exact number that it actually opened. Actually does not require appointment anymore because they came back and the others could do that, but haven't yet.
That's my understanding.
Um, so I mean, I, I, what Emily said at the end, I think is helpful that like in practice, everybody's found a workaround and mobility said they're fine with the workaround. And so we kind of don't really have appointment only and it's fine. So maybe it's fine, but it just still seems so cludgy. But if, if everybody's doing it this way and it's fine, I guess maybe I am okay going along with it. And just, I'll say, I really hope that whenever we start, the moratorium ends, this can be the kind of cleanup we do to simplify things in a useful way in the future.
Yeah, no, I, I totally agree with you on that, is to kind of revisit to see if this is something that works. See if this is something anybody cares about outside of a theoretical perspective, because if, if it works in practice and nobody's complaining, you know, do we need to go through that exercise? But we can kind of talk about that at that point. Okay, so I think the applicant is gonna come back to us in a couple of weeks with some some responses to the concerns about some of the loading and, and, and mobility issues surrounding the site. So what I'd like to do is leave the written comment open until, what are we doing, nine AM on the ninth of May, planning board at Somerville MA dot gov. Uh, so that's for anybody that wants to provide written test. Uh, so that's for anybody that wants to provide written testimony. And we'll take this up again on our meeting on the fifteenth. Uh, so everybody is. Not forgetting the fifteenth is a joint hearing at six thirty with Land Use Committee. There is, my understanding, one. Um. Administration-led amendment that will be taken up. I um. It will also take up at that point, the, potentially depending on, you know, time, the, the Assembly Square um. Plan, but right now what I'd like to do is move to continue this particular applicant until the meeting on the fifteenth, seconded by Amelia. Emily, can I?
Before we give the vote, I think um my member McNeely has his hand raised.
Did, oh, Michael, you did. I'm sorry. I, I wasn't, I wasn't scanning the board. Sorry. Give me it.
Thank you.
You did the, you did the hands, not the unmute.
I know, I know. I'm sorry. Uh, I'll, I'll be really quick. Um, so first, I think I'm a little bit unsure of my footing with my rationale here. And so I, I do encourage um either staff or, or another member to correct me here, but you know, I think. I have a concern with this application that I think is different from some of, you know, the previous discussion points. And it's specifically around um the intent of the zoning and the location it's in. So I perceive special permits as something that are not automatically granted and something that we can just kind of, you know. Um, coached to become a better project, but instead something that has to be fundamentally earned. It's not something that's automatic. Um, and I am concerned that by approving this use, this special permit here. We could potentially be prolonging the redevelopment of this location. So right now it's an empty. Or what I understand is a, a near-empty building uh that is zoned MR five. That is not currently built to suit that MR five and could easily be a location that we see redevelopment. And so I just um am, as one member personally, a bit concerned about this. But also would encourage the other members of this board to think about whether or not. By approving this special use, we actually are not being consistent with the zoning and summer vision. Because the zoning really is asking for more than just a single-story use here. So just want to throw that out there before you wrap up tonight.
Appreciate that, Michael. It's a very good point that I think we should explore at some point. Um, maybe in a, in a few weeks as to what, if any, the, the vision of this site might be. Um, if there is anything coming down the pike uh on redevelopment of this site and neighboring sites. Because you're right. I mean, I, I, I would say as, as one member, you know, a change of use. From retail to a different, you know, kind of retail is not necessarily a concern to me. Um. If there is a broader picture going on with this site, I would love to know. Because if what this is going to do, and I think Michael brings up a good point, is kind of stymie that. Um, that's something that I think the board should be aware of. But if it's, you know. If this is just what it's gonna be until somebody decides otherwise, then, then I look at that a little bit differently. Anybody else? Yeah, Emily.
Uh, Mr. Chair, through you, um, I, I fully uh understand. And I, I, what Mr. McNeely says and, and I, I agree that this, this um parcel is zoned MR five. It was uh zoned, uh, it was upzoned, it was zoned for redevelopment. Um, that said, I don't believe there is anything that's currently in the pipeline for the site's redevelopment. We've not received any information to my knowledge from the property owner uh of interest. Um, and uh, I think as, as we've all heard, uh, when we hear about the MBTA Communities Act. Rezoning um doesn't mean redevelopment will happen. It just means that we, we are trying to facilitate it as best we can. Um, so uh, this is a case where um there are many uses that could go into this uh retail space. Or these retail spaces. Um, there are many uh commercial uses that are allowed uh just by right, not by special permit. Um, so I don't, I don't know if um. The, allowing this use specifically would actually uh do anything to deter the redevelopment of the site. That said, I, I do understand the importance of, of discussing um supporting redevelopment in these areas that have been upzoned. And that is a valid concern.
Anybody else want to raise anything before we? See, done, I'm gonna ask Sarah to follow the role on continuing this. Um, to the fifteenth, seconded by Amelia.
Roll call vote. Uh, Michael Capuano.
Aye.
Amelia Ebbath.
Aye.
Tahan Habib.
Aye.
Michael McNeely.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
And Lynn Schuster. Luke Schuster, sorry.
Aye.
Having a tough time this evening. Sorry, guys.
Okay.
Entertaining.
Well, we're, we're almost through. This is gonna be a joke between me and Luke for a while, huh? Um. And the Crane Bros. Um, so we have two other items of. Uh, other business on our agenda. Um, since it's eight twenty. Um, I, I'd like to not handle Assembly Square tonight. I'd like to move that to a, a meeting. Probably in, in two weeks when we'll have more of an opportunity to, to discuss it um in, in detail that it deserves. But we do have one other, I think, agenda item from um. Uh, urban forestry, I guess is what we're calling the box department now. So. What, uh, what are we looking at here? Sarah or Sarah's designated?
That would be Sarah once again. Let's see if I can mess this one up. Um, so the um. The state requires the city to prepare a open space and recreation plan. Every, every few years, I believe it's, I believe that number is around five, but I might be wrong. Um, so back in twenty seventeen, uh, the planning board sent a letter of endorsement. Um, to the state, supporting the um opens place and uh. Recreation plan. That plan has since been updated and it now runs from twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty-two. Um, I guess that would make it seven years. Um, and the open space and um. Urban Forestry Division has asked that, that um you provide a similar endorsement to the letter that you did last time. Um, I do have that letter. It's really quite simple, but I can read it if that is helpful.
I think so. Um, just the, for, for the purpose of the members of the board and members of public to have an idea of what it is that we're looking at.
Um, yeah, so the, the letter as, as written was, um, and this was dated June eighth, twenty seventeen. Um, to whom it may concern, on behalf of the City of Somerville Planning Board, I am writing in support of the draft. Open Space and Recreation Plan. The board has participated in a presentation of this document. And had the opportunity to ask a number of questions of its authors. We understand and endorse, endorse the goals and objectives of the OSRP. And we approve the draft with no substanti- substantive revisions recommended. And then it goes on, congratulations on the completion of this important document for the City of Somerville.
Sarah, do we know between the presentation of um, of that plan that we signed off on and tonight? Um, have there been any substantive revisions to that that would have changed how we would have assessed this plan?
I do not believe so. Um, I think it's sort of, it's one of those state requirement. Um, documents and obviously sort of the, the more open space that we can get. We know we're all focused on improving that and the um, the recreation plan does go. Um, to more active, it might be that the, the type of recreation has changed slightly. Given the advent of the popularity of pickleball, but I am totally speculating right now.
I haven't played it yet and I'm looking forward to trying. Um, okay, and Sarah, I, I, I know we spoke earlier today on this off in a different meeting. Um, this is kind of the first, a- a- as I recall, the, the discussion, this is the first step. Uh, our adoption of this is the first step in uh the city being able to get sign-off from the state. To be able to apply for things like grants to. Build parks and pickleball courts and cool things like that. Is that, that's right?
Absolutely. And this, this is actually a, an endorsement rather than an adoption. So it is just. Right, the ne- the, the next step.
Okay, um, I for one am fully on board and uh endorsing our ability to. Move forward and getting more grants to enhance uh and increase our open space and our recreational goals. Um. Anybody else wanna weigh in on this? This is just a matter of, of a business. This is not a public hearing or anything like that, but. I see, uh, Amelia first.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Um, I also support signing off on and approving this. I would just add as a note for. Sarah to relay to the staff who are working on these types of implementation plans. Um, as the, as the summer vision representative to that process. I am very mindful of the fact that when we got to the end of that process. Um, there was some feedback that we had not really accounted for the needs or desires of our senior citizen community in like a big way. I know this plan is oriented towards the needs of sort of young people and children, as is appropriate in a lot of ways for an open space plan. Um, there are some passing references to sort of intergenerational uses and, and ADA accessibility. But we just ask that we um continue to highlight sort of the universal design features that make green spaces welcoming. For people of all ages and mobility levels. Um, as we move towards implementation here, I didn't see that quite as boldly as I would have maybe liked to. Not anything to hold up our sign-off over, however. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Amelia, and I, I, I share your um desire to see. The ways we use spaces to be accessible and accommodating to um as many people as we, as we can. Um, especially our seniors who um, I, I, I don't think get as much attention as, as they deserve sometimes. In our um planning. So thanks for, thanks for raising that. I, I really appreciate it. Um, Michael.
All right, I got the meat button this time. Um, so as our uh representative to the CPC, I also am excited about this document. And would like to highlight that the CPC likes to see its funds get amplified by more funds from other places. So for all the more, I am very excited about this plan.
Okay. Lynn Schuster.
Thank you. Question for, through you to, to um, Sarah. The, the hot open space topic in the circles I run in right now is all of the speculation around what the possible solutions. To the Winter Hill and Brown School needs might be. Um, and I saw in passing. Someone referenced the open space plan as, as if it would preclude maybe one of the options. That we understand is on the table. Um, and I'm speaking kind of vaguely because I, I don't want to misrepresent anything. But I'm just, is there anything in your read of this plan that could? Say like a s- a combined solution on Trump Field, you know, would violate a plan like this? Because it's saying the full scope of Trump Field is sacrosanct or I, I didn't in my scan see anything like that, but just. Can you imagine it? Or how would this connect to a, a really important decision around how to use space flexibly in the city?
Oof, through the, through, through the chair, um, that is something that I would have to investigate. Um, I know there are certain spaces in the city that are uh. I think it's Title eighty that are set aside and that have different protections over them. That, that we, the city don't really have, we have limited um. Control, even if it is, you know, sort of a city-owned uh space. And I know I'm doing horribly at this.
Is it Article ninety-seven? I'm in planning hell with Article ninety-seven on something else.
But yes, thank you. At least I didn't say Article nine. I'm having a horrible time this evening. I apologize to everybody.
Time as Sarah indicates.
This is great. I love this. I love you people.
That, that's helpful. So it sounds like the.
We could, we could ask, um, we can ask PISA for a presentation if that's helpful too.
I don't, I, hold off on that. I, I don't want to require another presentation. It, it may be a different, a, a, a simpler way to phrase what's on my mind is just. The nature of this plan is not really specifically protecting things from ever getting redeveloped. Or targeting ones for, it, it's not at that level of specificity. So the city is gonna remain as whatever. This won't constrain the flexibility the cities uh has before adoption of this in terms of dealing with the school building issues, correct?
I do not believe so.
Thanks.
Um, seeing none, the chair votes to endorse. Sarah, is that what we're doing? We're endorsing?
Yes.
You're endorsing the, the amended plan uh that goes through twenty thirty-two. Seconded by Amelia. If we can roll call, please.
Absolutely. Michael Capuano.
Aye.
Amelia Ebbath.
Aye.
Tahan Habib.
Aye.
Michael McNeely.
Aye.
And Luke Schuster.
Aye.
What about me?
Oh, Lynn Richards. Oh, my gosh. See, you're not even popping up on my screen right now.
Lynn Schuster already voted.
Uh, aye.
Can I please call the roll call to adjourn so I don't make a mess of anything else?
Yeah, I'm about to do that right now. At eight, at eight-thirty on the day, as it, as it turns exactly at eight-thirty. Uh, we're all hungry. Um, the chair moves to adjourn, seconded by Amelia.
Does somebody else want to call the roll? Uh, Michael, Michael Capuano.
Do we, do we, do we still have Emily? Uh, aye.
Emily, would you like to call the roll?
I'm present if you want to vote of no confidence.
Fully confident, just not a bit.
Roll call, Michael Capuano.
Aye.
Amelia Ebbath.
Aye.
Tahan Habib.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Michael McNeely.
Aye.
And Luke Schuster.
Aye.
Thank you all for your, for your patience with me this evening.
Thanks, thanks, thanks for being with us. We're uh not always easy.
Levity, yeah.
Yeah, thank you all very much. See you in a couple of weeks.
Good night.